Good evening, please sit down. I would like to welcome everyone here this evening to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. Item 1 is apologies.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Lawson, Shepherd, Philipson, White, Tinian and Taylor.
Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Item 2, minutes. Oh, sorry. Was there any other apologies? Councillor Ali. Councillor Ali's there. There's some amazing reconnations going on here. Okay, all done with apologies. Item 2 is minutes. Does council agree the minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 3rd of September Official announcements, item 3. I will invite councillor Forbes to say a few words about former councillor Jimmy Snowden, who has sadly passed away, and also for councillor Beecham to say a few words on councillor Sheila Faith, who has sadly passed away. I will then ask council to stand under more respect for a minute's silence. Councillor Forbes.
Lord Mayor and colleagues, it's with great sadness that we mark the passing of former colleague councillor Jimmy Snowden. Jimmy was first elected to the city council in May 2000. In fact, there are two of us, Nick Cott and I, who were also elected on the same day that he was elected to the city council. And he served for four years as the councillor for Scotswood Ward before not being successful in his attempt to stand the following year in Denton. During his time as a councillor, Jimmy served on a number of committees, including for the full length of his time, the Community and Housing Select Committee and also Licensing Committee, but he also served on Regulatory Committee and was a prominent member of the Riverside West Area Committee. In fact, one of my memories of being a councillor alongside Jimmy was it just so happened that we had an area committee meeting on the 11th of September 2001, and it was actually in a car on our way to the area committee that Jimmy and I heard at the same time about the tragic events in New York. And I remember him being absolutely taken aback by the scale of the devastation that we were hearing about on the radio. He also was very active in his local community. He served as a school governor for Delable Primary School. But members may also remember his involvement, longstanding involvement in the charity Tyneside Tool Aid, where he used the skills that he's developed in crafts to refurbish tools that were then distributed to third world countries, recycling tools for the benefit of others. And Jimmy was also very active within the Labour Party. Alderman Carter has just told me that he was the best leafletter that she'd ever known. And I know that our sympathies are very much with Brenda and his family, and we share in the sadness of his passing.
Thank you councillor Forbes. Councillor Beecham?
My Lord Mayor, Sheila Faith was a Conservative Member of this city council, representing what was then the Newburn Number Three Ward from 1975 to 1978. She'd previously served on Northumberland County Council. She went on to become a Conservative Member of Parliament for Belpa from 1979 to 83, when there was a boundary redistribution and she sought another seat, but later became an MEP. She was very much on the pro-European side of the Conservative Party. I guess you would not have been too happy to see what her party's position is on that matter these days. She had an unusual career professionally because, as a young woman, she qualified as a dentist in 1950. Now, there were not many women in that profession at that time. She practised for a number of years, became also a JP, and in the European Parliament was involved with a number of committees during her tenure there, before she eventually stood down. She was also active in the community locally, although in the last few years has been rather in health. But I'm sure council wish to extend to her husband Dennis our sincere sympathy on her passing.
Thank you councillor Beecham. Can I invite you all to stand, please, for a minute's silence? Alderman Margaret Carter is circulating a sponsorship form around the chamber this evening. She has raised funds for Age UK and is going to be flying across the time on a zip wire on Sunday, the 19th of October. Quite remarkable. Alderman Carter is 84 years young, so that is some feat from a game lady. Please show your support on the sponsorship form. Thank you. Alderman Carter, did you say something?
I said, "Just like Bear Grylls, without the Olympic torch."
Yes. But it's not a bear, Margaret, is it? No. Item 4 is petitions. Item 4 on the agenda is the petitions, and five have been received for this meeting. Four will be dealt with the normal way, under standing orders. The fourth has been submitted under the council's petition scheme. I propose to take the first four in the usual way before dealing with the one submitted under the petition scheme. So that's item 4a. The first is about asking for more pressure to be put on landlords for waste in the Windgrove Ward, and I call on Nasa Khan to introduce the petition.
During a public meeting held on the 18th of September, 50 residents voted and agreed the following petition. "We, the undersigned petition Newcastle City Council, two, on the following two points. Firstly, put more pressure on landlords and agents in the Windgrove area to take responsibility for the waste from their properties and inform new tenants about rubbish disposal. Example, bringing bins into the yard, numbers to call for disposal of large waste, etc. Secondly, to target enforcement on a number of back lanes at certain times of the year, particularly summer, to combat fly tipping and large amounts being emptied onto the streets. We would also like to request a meeting with relevant senior council officers." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Khan. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? Agreed. Item 4b, the second is regarding student landlords in the back lanes in Heaton. Councillor Salinas to introduce the petition.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a petition signed by 233 residents, mostly from Ouzben Ward, but some also from Jesmond and other parts of Heaton, asking, well, what it says is, "We, the undersigned, call upon Newcastle City Council to take action on student landlords and letting agents who dump waste from their properties over the summer. We ask that the proper student house clear-out scheme be implemented and for enforcement on fly tipping."
Thank you councillor Salinas. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? Agreed. Item 4c, the third petition is the Global People's Climate Change Petition, and represented by councillor Ramon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It was a pleasure receiving this e-petition, to which over 300 Newcastle residents signed up to. This petition was presented to the council at the Global People's Climate March on the 21st of September, and the petition reads, "Scientists warn us that the climate change could accelerate beyond our control, threatening our survival and everything we love. We call on you to keep global temperature rise under unacceptable dangerous level of two degrees by phasing our carbon pollution to zero. To achieve this, you must urgently forge realistic global, national and local agreements to rapidly shift our societies and economies to 100% clean energy by 2050. Do this fairly with support to the most vulnerable among us. Our world is worth saving, and now is our moment to act. But to change everything, we need everyone to join us."
Thank you councillor Ramon. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? We understand Annie Rutter is not here at the moment, so we move on to item 4e. "We now come to the large petition submitted via Eunison on behalf of a collective group about reductions to Sure Start, which has been submitted in accordance with the council's petition scheme. Under that scheme, any petition submitted to the council, which has more than 2,500 signatories, is to be the subject of a time-limited debate at full council. The procedure in this case is that the presenter will have five minutes to present their petition, and then there is scope for council to debate the matter for up to 15 minutes before deciding on what action to take in respect of the petition." This petition will be presented by Linda Hardy, so I invite Ms Hardy to the lectern.
Our petition is for Sure Start. "We, the undersigned, believe that Sure Start is an invaluable service, improving outcomes for young people and their families, reducing inequalities between families in greatest need and their peers in child development, school readiness, parenting aspirations, parenting skills, child and family health and life chances." The speech that has been prepared was from one of the service users, a parent who uses Sure Start. She did expect to come here herself and deliver the speech, but then, after some consideration, she decided that she didn't feel able to do that. So I have her speech and I will just be reading out her words. So she's a parent and service user of Leamington and Gola Fields Sure Start, and what she'd said was that she wanted to come today and tell you about my story and why Sure Start is so important to me and to other parents. "It's not easy to stand in front of such a big audience, and I will be talking why this is difficult for me personally. I'm a mother of twins, and they were born 10 weeks prematurely, which was a difficult and worrying start for any new mother. When my twins were only 10 months old, I split up with their father. The relationship was very troubled, and I was a victim of domestic violence. Although their father retained contact with the twins from July 2011, this ended at Christmas of that year, following an incident where he vandalized my car. I had to take out injunction against him. I was referred by women's aid to Sure Start. Before then, I didn't know that Sure Start even existed. I was really isolated, with no friends and limited family members to go to for support, and my twins weren't sleeping. Then Sure Start came along, and things started to improve. I had two Sure Start workers who would come to my house for an hour a week and play with my children, or they would maybe take them to the park. Without that support at that time, I don't know how I would have carried on. I felt I was heading for a breakdown. I had so little confidence in myself, it had all been taken away from me. I had no confidence in being able to do things with my children. When I look back now, I would have probably been sectioned, and the children would have had to live with their father. The thought of what could have happened is truly awful. My children still to this day have no contact with their father. The children are now four years old, and with the support of staff at Sure Start, I've got so much confidence. I can take my children out without family support, I can visit play centres, soft play, and even take them to the beach on my own. This would have been unthinkable before Sure Start. I've had a lot of support from Carol Boleham from Action For Children, I've attended the Freedom Programme with her support. This is for victims of domestic violence or abuse. Attending this course gave me a lot of insight into what makes up domestic violence, and how this can be very widespread, and that I did the right thing in ending this relationship. It's also important to realise that it's not your fault. After this course, I contacted a councillor, and from this process, both the councillor and myself have been amazed at the progress I've made. On my last day of counselling, I'd enrolled for a course at college in childcare, which I'm happy to say that I passed. This, I strongly believe, is down to the support I've received through Sure Start. Without them, I would still be at rock bottom. I still attend centres. Last Wednesday at Leamington, Sure Start staff had a little fire going in the garden area. We all toasted marshmallows, not something that I'd ever thought about doing at all. The children and parents all enjoyed it, and what this does is it gives you the opportunity to experience and learn new things in a fun, friendly and non-threatening environment, experiences that you can share with your children. I've also attended family fun events at Leamington and Gola Fields. My children got their playgroup places through Sure Start and Action For Children. They attend five days a week for three hours. They were apprehensive at first, but they've come on so well, they're confident, bright and happy children, and they now attend nursery. Without the help and support of Sure Start, I'd be in a very different position than I am now. My children still talk about the staff at Sure Start. I want the opportunities that I was given through Sure Start to be available to all women and men in similar circumstances. There's no stigma attached to using Sure Start. It's available to all, in all circumstances, backgrounds and across all areas of Newcastle. This is so important and should be retained. In my own experience of domestic violence, I know that this can happen to anyone from any area. I was so lucky to have been pointed in the right direction of Sure Start. Please do not limit the reach of Sure Start, it's so vital to us all. Thank you."
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. I will now see a relevant cabinet member, councillor Kingsland, to respond. I understand we have two speakers from the Liberal Group, Anita and councillor Cott? Yeah. And we have councillor Kingsland. Do we have anybody else from the Labor Group? Councillor Strether? Right.
I've been held by security and I'm supposed to give an address.
Yes, okay, we'll sort it out just after this. Okay.
The microphone wasn't coming on. Lord Mayor, thank you, Linda, and to the petitioners for bringing this debate to us tonight. I'd also like to thank the parent for her very personal and moving story. I, like you, greatly value the work of Sure Start and the improvements it's made to lives of families and children in Newcastle. Also, like you, I'm deeply concerned about the impact of the cuts that we're having to make. I do feel it really unpalatable, and I know my colleagues on this side of the chamber do too. Council will appreciate that the cuts of £4.7 million to Sure Start and Family Services were agreed as part of a three-year budget plan a couple of years ago. At the time, we agreed that the bulk of the cuts would go into year three, and I think we were hopeful at that time that the financial picture would be better. But unfortunately, the coalition government hasn't listened to the concerns of people across the country. This is a national issue, it's not just one for us, and now we see ourselves facing even greater cuts. And if George Osborne's speech earlier this week is any indication of the future, it is only going to get worse. The petition is very timely, as we are currently completing phase one of a consultation about how we implement the cuts through the Family Services Review. A decision about the implementation will go to Cabinet on the 22nd of October, and there will then be further consultation around the impact assessments, which I hope that those people who've taken the interest in signing the petition will also be involved in. I would therefore ask council to agree that we should receive the petition and refer it to Cabinet alongside the Family Services Review consultation, and I would also ask council to resolve to support parents in delivering the petition to Downing Street.
Thank you. Councillor, Anita Lower? Councillor Lower?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank Eunison and all the parents who've taken part in this Sure Start debate that they have brought tonight. I do think that, just to make it clear, that we do support the concerns of everyone involved with Sure Start, and as Chair of Scrutiny, we've actually started looking at what the options are and what we can contribute towards the debate on it. I think there is a lot of concern that we raised about over the data and what's collected by Sure Start, and what actually works, what other bits of Sure Start that are really providing, making difference for children. I think there is a cost involved with Sure Start, but it's actually a cost of not doing anything. I think what we need to do is talk to other agencies, healthcare, we need to talk about benefits for schools. It's the knock-on effect of Sure Start, and until we know what that is, we can't start to understand what any reduction in the service will mean, in real terms, in the future to these children who are benefiting from it so much at the moment. I think that proper review of the system needs to take place, we need to look at how we join up services with Sure Start, and have Sure Start as a hub, and how that money is spread out. We also need to remember, we talk about the government cuts, but the council still gets over a quarter of a billion pounds from the government, and we decide how to spend it here. And one of the things I would just like to say is that, you know, Sure Start's there to give every child a good start in life. Sure Start centres should become the hubs of support for children with local services for health, family support, having a duty to cooperate and co-locate to provide a single point of access in every community. Local authorities should have a stronger role in childcare provision for parents and to strengthen local accountability with schools. All of this should be with Sure Start at the centre of it. Those aren't my words, by the way, those are the words of the task force set up by Ed Miliband of Labour leaders, to look at the cuts in Sure Start and the effect of them. I think that maybe the party opposite need to look to the leader and to their own party's decision on how important Sure Start is, and we should maybe not jump into delaying it at the moment. But, well, it's his recommendations to his group, this is how he feels about Sure Start, and I think he should be taking it on board, instead of just looking at it as a budget cut. I think Sure Start is much more important than a political toy is a budget cut. And I think that we should really be, and I think we should really be looking at working to do this and doing it in an ordered way. And yes, we've waited three years for this cut to come, but there seems to be no preparation. There are three options being put forward, which is cut, cut or more cut, and we really should have more time to look at this. In the scheme of things, £5 million doesn't sound a lot of money, it is in the budget, however, it's what that value gives, that £5 million brings to children in the future and the development of this city and the future of their lives. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Lower. Councillor Strether?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Eunison for bringing this petition, and all on, I think in the whole council support the sentiments in it, and to thank particularly the parent who shared with us her personal experience, which must have been very difficult to write, so I hope you convey our thanks to her. I think sometimes we take for granted Sure Start, but I think what we should recognise is that it brings so much value to so many people in the city, and Newcastle is the one core city who, out of all of its Ofsted's inspections, has good or outstanding ratings, and it's something that we can be very proud of indeed. And I'd also like to thank Eunison for their publication which they put around this evening, because I think it shows some of the benefits and the impacts of Sure Start. The evidence is there, it shows how it's narrowing the gap in educational attainment, in breastfeeding, and in obesity, and in other areas. So I think we're very proud of what we've achieved so far. I am a bit astounded from councillor Lower's speech tonight, because we're finding ourselves in this situation because of serious budget cuts imposed on us by the coalition government. We have to take a decision to take over £4 million out of Sure Start and other family services, which leaves us with £7.1 million at this juncture to distribute across the city. These are really difficult political decisions that we have to take, and we do know at the end of the day, however hard we try, some families are going to get less than they're getting now. But we on this side of the House will actually do everything possible to make sure that that money is allocated according to need and as fairly as possible. So I do find that's quite astounding, that they're saying it's Labour's fault. And let me remind you, it was 15 years ago that the Labour Party introduced Sure Start, and it's 15 years that this has been embedded in this authority with some outstanding achievements, and that we should be all pulling in the same direction to try and make the best of it. We have a consultation that's been ongoing, which I also would like to say is absolutely excellent, and I want to congratulate everybody that's been involved in that consultation. It is only phase one, there is, once this decision's taken about which of the three options we're going to go for in terms of distributing money across the city. There will be then an assessment of the impact of that, then there'll be a further consultation about how services will be configured on the ground, which will perceive commissioning. So there's a long way to go yet, but at the end of the day, we're faced with really difficult decisions. And let's be clear, this is not our fault. We actually want to not only maintain Sure Start, but build on it, make it available to as many families as possible, and that we are facing an intolerable budget situation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Strether. Councillor Cott?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and I would also like to thank Eunison, and also to the parent who put that wonderful, moving speech together, and I know that you will communicate all of council's thanks to her for doing that. That was incredibly powerful, and it illustrates one of the many reasons why Sure Start is so important. And Sure Start is something that has been valued in this city since its conception and has been carried through and developed under two council administrations, the current one and the previous Liberal Democrat administration. I think everyone in this chamber is very much committed to it. I am quite nervous about the review, I'm quite nervous about the cuts. Councillor Lower made a point about the government cuts, and I think we should really understand the context, that almost 70% of funding to this city council comes from central government. There does have to be a local responsibility to actually maintain and deliver services, particularly in times of austerity, and I think that does have to be borne in mind. But Sure Start is incredibly important, because it gives children the best start in life, it helps to give them the best start in life. We know, we share across this chamber a view, that focusing on young children is one of the most important things that we can do, we have to work with them and their families. There was a parliamentary, all-party parliamentary Sure Start group which produced a report the end of last year, and it's certainly...
Assaulting me! No cuts to Sure Start! No personal demonstration!
In the public gallery, please be quiet, otherwise we're not a journalists' meeting.
How can you justify this? Unloading an athlete.
Councillor Cott, are you okay to carry on?
Should I carry on, Lord Mayor, or should I sit down? Carry on.
This is appropriate behaviour by parents. Parents who are suffering from cuts from Sure Start are being affected from grosses damage.
The children are all being abducted. Could I remind the council that the families are the heart of any systemic process of Sure Start? I'd like to see a vote whether people think that those children are being disruptive. They're not screaming, they're...
In the public gallery, please. This meeting will be adjourned if you don't behave yourselves, basically. You're actually frightening children, it's just not on. Councillor Cott?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. There was actually an all-party parliamentary Sure Start group which reported at the end of last year, and it suggested that Sure Start was really important, should continue to provide advice, support and services to all families with children under five, but a renewed focus was recommended on the age from conception to two. And I know that's something that the present government is looking at and developing, and we have the renewed childcare offer there, and I'm sure that the Labour Party is looking at such proposals as well to develop that. So I think that's something that we all share. One of my concerns about the development... One of my concerns about the development is this idea, the move away or potential move away from universal provision to targeting. Targeting's obviously really important to deal with issues of disadvantage, but there are some services which really do need to be universal services, they need to be protected in that form. And I'm very concerned that some of that may be lost, so I'm sure that's something that will be looked at. I know that scrutiny's been looking at this, of course councillor Loa's mentioned some of these things, I know that scrutiny's going to have another look at it before a report comes to Cabinet, which I think is in October, sorry, later this month, isn't it? So anyway, there's still some discussion to have. I'd be really disappointed if these services are cut without being clear how they integrate with family support generally. I know that the two different lines of the budget proposal has been brought together, but it does seem at the moment, there's an incredible lack of detail and I'm sure there's work going on behind the scenes, but it doesn't seem very clear certainly to us in the opposition and I know to parents about what the outcomes might look like. And it's really difficult sometimes to have a clear debate without being clear about some of those parameters. So there are some words of caution there, but I think we would like to say that we're really keen to protect Sure Start and we would like to work across the council chamber to actually deliver a service which suits children and young people and suits parents. This is far too important to leave to party politics and I'm very disappointed that the administration wished a showboat about Labour Party politics over an issue which is really important. When I was portfolio holder, this was an area where we had commonality and we agreed, right? And we may have had more money, but we agreed. You seem to want to change it into a party political football. Thank you for Unison for bringing this issue to council, it's really important and thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Okay councillor Cot. councillor Kingsland, would you like to respond, please?
Yes, I would and I'll start with the last point.
She will be heard after councillor Kingsland's.
Just I'd like to start by responding to councillor Cot's point because I didn't want to make this a political football, but it was his colleague councillor Loa who said we were using Sure Start as a political toy and I think that is disgraceful. We all feel really upset by the situation we're in at the moment. And what I would stress, unfortunately, we haven't heard any proposals from the other side about where else this four million pounds might come from, but we all know the other pressures, we're under constant pressure from local residents about environmental services, the arguments around the visible against the vulnerable, how we square those balances. It's a really, really difficult situation we're in and we're not using this as a political toy, I can assure everybody of that. What I would assure you also, and Unison and others, and I hope we can all work together on this, is that obviously this is our bit, the council bit of the spend on Sure Start. It is a partnership, there are other people involved, there is money from health, there are ongoing dialogues with the partners in relation to how we can mitigate some of these lotteries. We're not going to stop here, this is planning for the worst scenario, but we will be looking for every possible source of funding in order to protect services as far as we possibly can. And again, I would assure councillor Cot that universal services aren't part of this. Universal services, health visiting, all of that sort of thing will still continue, schools will still continue, they're the main universal service we have in the city and they're not part of this and those are largely protected because their budgets are in a better position. So I would assure everybody, we are doing our very, very best to see where we can find additional funding from so that we can mitigate against some of these cuts and obviously we'd, rather than having a fight over it, I'd like some support from everybody, including our partners, to do that.
Thank you councillor Kingsland. Does council agree to deal with the petition as proposed by councillor Kingsland? Thank you. I'll take it back to four D because the young lady is here now, that's Annie Rutter. The fourth petition is regarding Sure Start provision and represented by Annie Rutter.
Thank you. I've been given a hundred words to represent parents against cuts. Here's one word: con. We're unimpressed by the complete lack of publicity given to the family services review. If people did hear about it, then they were then forced to vote between equally terrible options. We're all users of Sure Start, but we've got no wish to see children with speech and language therapy needs or children with mental health problems or parents that need support around substance abuse affected in order to save Sure Start. All of these cuts, we're against all of these cuts and that's the message we've got. Another word: scars. I asked a friend who couldn't come because her child would likely have vomited on you all and she said that her take-home message from the consultation was that from the statistics it looks like we cannot afford any cuts in family services and that levels of deprivation in Newcastle are already high. Any further cuts will scar our communities. Another word, well, two: crocodile tears. As parents were sick of councillors crying crocodile tears while our communities are suffering from cuts to basic services, from reductions to support like benefits and at the same time increases in living costs. Nick Forbes told us earlier that his hands are tied by legality. Once it was illegal for women to vote, once slavery was legal. And I'm sure I don't have to remind you that Hitler was voted into power. Please don't tell us that the law is more important than Newcastle's children. We think that Newcastle's children are all of our responsibility. They didn't cause the recession, they didn't bail out banks with public money, they didn't vote for any wars abroad and they didn't vote for austerity measures at home. We demand that you stop voting for cuts and start meeting the needs of the poorest and most vulnerable people of Newcastle and defend all of the children in Newcastle. And may I just say, considering where we are today and how we got here, the fact that many of you wouldn't have been here if it hadn't been for the suffragettes, was it really that much of a crime to hang a banner instead of heckling you? A banner that said, "No cuts to Sure Start, no cuts at all"? That's what I'd ask you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Rutter. Does council agree to refer the petition to the relevant cabinet member and director? Thank you. Item five is the Audit Committee Annual Report 2013/14. I'd like to call on Mr Hamish Moore, the independent chair, to introduce the report information for information and discussion.
Good evening, thank you, Lord Mayor and members. This report is an annual report that as your Chair of the Audit Committee I make to the council. The purpose of having an audit committee is to provide you as members with an independent review of the council's procedures and controls, which in a time of major economic change is really important that those risks are adequately managed. The Audit Committee is one of the independent review mechanisms that is open to you. The other three are the scrutiny process, the having of an external auditor, which in our case at the moment is Deloitte, and lastly, the internal audit function. Historically, the Audit Committee has played a role that is a combination of functions, but primarily, and historically, it's operated initially in a policeman-type role. But increasingly, and rightly so in my opinion, we need to be moving much more towards a critical friend role. And in that sense, the key areas that I'd like to bring to your attention this year that the Audit Committee has achieved are as follows. First of all and most importantly, you have received a clean and timely sign-off of the annual accounts and no short order to the finance department in achieving that. The annual governance statement, which highlights the risks that we feel are particularly important, is much shorter this year and at much lower levels. Our focus has been on the response of the authority to the economic climate. Our response to looking at the fitness-for-purpose approach to planning and delivery has, I believe, led to a significant improvement in that approach. We continue and spend some time on the monitoring role, but actually in time to come, that must be an ever-increasing role for scrutiny. And I think we've given special recognition to major projects and I'm pleased to say that the approach to that has significantly changed in the last 12 months. So my last point is about the position going forward for the Audit Committee. We will still be, you will be reassured, looking at the key risks and obviously the economic position is the major one. We will be relying to a greater degree, as I've said, on the scrutiny function. We see our role as increasingly supportive in a time of change, but our focus is very much on making sure those major risks are adequately managed. Thank you.
Thank you, Hamish. I call on councillor Nick Kemp, he is Vice Chair of the Audit Committee.
Firstly, I'd like to thank Hamish for yet another year of service for his usual thorough or forensic approach to audit. And I would also like to place on record my thanks to Malcolm Mark and Paul, the Liberal Independents on the committee and of course my fellow council members. I think it's quite clear that Audit Committee has come a long way as far as it's effectively some focus over the last few years. And there's no doubt in my mind a considerable factor contributed to that has been the role of the independents. And it's clear that the independents are able to bring a fresh perspective, to see things in a way that perhaps sometimes we don't see. And I think that combination of the independents with some long-serving, some longer than most, on the committee and other new members have contributed to making this focus effectively, I think collegiately, and as Hamish says, towards a more combined and joint role with scrutiny as we go forward. I think it could be a huge amount of ground over the last few years and I hope this last year, it showed that the work of audits contributed positively in addressing a number of the risk factors for the council and assisted in addressing and identifying interventions to change to alleviate those risks. There's no doubt that this has been an incredibly challenging year and the role of audits plays an important role, although that term is no doubt challenging to the council itself. The systems, the programmes, staffing and culture changes that have all taken place and this is something that audits are attempting to work through in a complimentary, but as I say, challenging manner. I would like to also thank the finance and pleasure team, the auditing and the host of officers who've shared the pleasure, I believe, of attending and presenting to the committee. So I'm just pleased to accept and welcome the report.
Thank you councillor Kemp. councillor, sorry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Moore, for your report. I understand that you've been chairman for nearly 10 years now and on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group as well as on the Labour Group, I'd like to thank you for your service during that time. What I would like to ask you is reflecting over that whole period rather than just this year, what has been the most significant achievement of the Audit Committee in the last 10 years and what do you think is the biggest challenge going forward?
I think the second part is easier to answer than the first part. I think the second part is how you respond to the significant decrease in revenue and the mechanisms for making decisions that are appropriate in that period and how you respond to some of the very big cultural challenges that those changes will require. I take a stab at the first part. I think we've come a long way from a time period when the idea of an independent challenge was received in various degrees of appetite by officers. And I'd like to think now that actually that challenge is respected for the value that it brings and it's brought about some significant changes in the way in which the council does its business. And I think, for example, the capital programme, there were some significant difficulties in the past, but the current system is to be recognised and in fact, the director appropriate was complimented at the last Audit Committee.
Okay councillor Ashby. councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Hamish, for bringing your annual report before council and indeed for your work. I'll echo councillor Ashby's and councillor Kemp's thanks for your leadership role in relation to Audit Committee over many years. In section 3.1 of the report, the very first sentence says, "There's no statutory obligation to establish an Audit Committee." So given that we're in these tough times and we have to think very carefully about how we spend our money through this austerity programme, could you give us an idea of the added value of Audit Committee, especially in relation, I think, to governance and the overview that Audit gives on that, please, Hamish? And secondly, one of the key roles of Audit Committee is to scrutinise the annual accounts of council, do it on behalf of all of us. Indeed, it's Constitutional Committee who actually formally sign them off and they will come to council at some point. But there is, it's that very important role, I think. Are you confident that the committee are stringent enough in the work that they do in scrutinising those accounts so that we can all be assured that everything in there is accurate, an accurate reflection of what we've been doing? And I guess there's also a query about what the external auditor's view is of all of that as well, so I'm interested in your view about that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Well, you're right, it's not a statutory obligation on behalf of the authority that you have to have an Audit Committee, although the SIPFA, the Chartered Institute of Public Finance Accountants, in both 2005 and in 2013, recommend that it's good practice that you have one. Without in any way being flippant, it's not so much whether you have an Audit Committee, it's whether it's a good Audit Committee. And I think you can look at corporate history in both the private and public sectors and ask some questions about how on earth did those organisations get into the difficulties that they're in? What was the strength of governance? So if you take the most recent examples of Tesco or the Co-op Bank or perhaps Midstaff's hospitals and ask the question, "What was the Audit Committee doing?", you then begin to question, "How rigorous was it?". So what do you get for your money? I suppose it's the question you're asking. Well, if we were warmly liked and it was a pleasure for officers to come to us, I think that you would be wanting to ask some questions about the value for money. I think the rigor of some of the questioning and some of the changes that have followed that rigor gives you an indication that actually the value is added. I think if, I could put it the other way as well, if I'm a member, how do I get reassurance that the processes of the council are in accordance with good governance? Well, you've got part reliance on scrutiny, you've got part reliance on the external auditor and you've got part reliance on internal audit, but you don't have anything else. So in that sense, it is one of those factors that gives you an assurance because it's an independent set of appointments. You asked me about the process of looking at the accounts. So in June, the draft accounts come to the Audit Committee and there's a very thorough debate and questioning and some of the members of the committee will not let go of even the smallest out or data if there's not clarity. So the rigor of the June meeting is absolutely enormous in this regard. And then there's a subsequent review at the Audit Committee in September and a further review between the Audit Committee and the Constitutional Committee at the end of September. So I think that's pretty rigorous. And then the third point you made was what do Deloitte think about us as an Audit Committee? Well, the feedback that I get from the senior partner at Deloitte is that he thinks that our committee is pretty rigorous and he describes it as one of the better functioning Audit Committees that he sees. I tried to press him to say, "Are we the best?", but he said he's an auditor and he wouldn't give that opinion.
Thank you, thank you very much. councillor Higgins.
Yes, can I thank Mr Moore for this report? I must admit that I do venture slightly with some trepidation into the area of finance and audit, it's not one of my strongest subjects, but my question relates to the composition of the Audit Committee. And perhaps I can just mention about the family that I grew up in, where we were a very traditional family, where dad used to bring his wage packet home at the end of every week, give it to my mother, my mother used to give him his pocket money and then she would handle the family finances. And therefore probably I grew up with the sort of impression that women largely are better at handling finances than men. And if I look at the composition of the Audit Committee, it comprises eight men and one woman. Now, I don't know whether councillor Pearson acts in the role of sort of mother in that particular committee, but I just wondered whether you have a comment about the gender balance of that committee?
Well, it's way beyond me to make a decision about whether one gender is better at this job or the other. The composition of the committee is obviously at the behest in terms of elected members of the relevant leaders, so I have... of the relevant leaders, so I have no part in that. I don't even have the opportunity to suggest or request. In the independent area, that is a different matter. One of the challenges is that the responsibilities of getting this right are very, very significant, not just for the council, but for the independent members. And the difficulty is that you need people from a wide variety of backgrounds who can add a different flavour to the mix. So at the moment, we're very fortunate, we've got an ex-trade union leader, we've got somebody who was involved in major capital projects, and we've got someone from an SME sector, and we've got myself. So if the opportunity arises to rebalance it in the way you've described, I think the committee would welcome that, but it's not intentional.
Thank you. Councillor David Slesinger.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to echo the words of Nick Kemp. He understands precisely what's required of the Audit Committee, and I share with him the view that we're getting excellent service. I was troubled by the comment that the Audit Committee is not statutory, which is almost a hint that we don't need it. In my experience, quite the opposite. The savings made on a month, on a meeting-by-meeting basis by the Audit Committee far, far outweigh any costs. And as to male-female balance, I'm happy to record, to remember, that Deloitte's team, most of the work is undertaken by a lady who, again, has a first-class understanding of what is required. Hamish, you spoke much about risk. What do you perceive, from your vast experience now, to be the greatest risk, or the greatest risks that we will face in the next three years? Why should we, as a council, be comforted that because of independent members, we've actually grasped the issues involved? And we meet but four times a year. The agendas, frankly, can't be done in the three hours that we allocate. Have you considered how many meetings we really need?
I think, in relation to the second point you make, it's not about the number of the meetings, it's about what goes on at the meetings. So deliberately, in order to minimise the amount of office a time, and to optimise the setting-up costs of having the meetings, we deliberately chose to go for four. But they are quite intensive meetings and quite long meetings, but the idea is to try and use that time in the most efficient way. And at the current time, I'm comfortable that four is about right. We have a fifth one which relates to the signing of the accounts, but if I felt it was more necessary to increase the number, I would raise that. I think your first point is about the biggest risks, and the biggest risk is clearly, regardless of the political environment, the magnitude of the revenue flow into the authority, and the decisions that need to be made in that, and the cultural change that has to go with that, is the biggest risk, and how that's managed. There is a good medium-term plan, there's a lot of evidence going on into the planning process, but as the decisions get more and more difficult, because the easier, lower-hanging fruit, so to speak, has already been made, I think that process will become much, much more difficult. And there, I think, whilst we need to be challenging, we also need to be the critical frame, to give assurance that the process is being managed well.
Thank you. And finally, councillor Beecham.
I'd like to join others in paying tribute to Hamish and the independent members of the committee. I think it is very important that we do have independent members capable of bringing an external view to what is inherently a complicated issue, political certainly, but as it were, with a small p. Having said that, I take councillor Slesinger's point about perhaps the desirability, not perhaps of the whole committee meeting more regularly, but if there are significant issues, they tend to be rather technical. Perhaps a smaller group could convene, meet, and report back to the more regular committee. That might be something to look forward to. But, Hamish, at the end of your last remarks, you referred to the real situation. In opening, you talked about the economic situation. I take it you really meant the financial situation affecting the authority. Obviously, there are general issues around the economy, but we're facing a particular financial crisis of growing dimensions, and I'm sure it's that which you were referring to. And perhaps you'd just like to conferron it, because of course, as we've heard earlier tonight, we are facing unprecedented challenges, and not just this council, but other councils as well. And I think, as we've heard at Audit Committee, before very long, we may be down to the bare bones of fulfilling our statutory duties only, and that is clearly a serious matter. So I'm wondering whether the National Union of Chairs of Audit Committees is able to get together and perhaps make an input into the national debate about this. I don't know whether, in fact, you and other colleagues meet, but I think it would be helpful if there were to be such meetings for a view to be made in the public arena and to the government. I think that it's something that would be welcomed by people across the political divide and in all kinds of local authorities, because what we're hearing at the moment, in all the discussions and promises that have been made this week, not a word has been mentioned about local government and the services which local government provides. But finally, if I may, in that context, just say one other thing. You and other members of the committee, and indeed, members of council, refer to "going forward". Can I invite you to abandon that phrase? We're not going forward, unfortunately, we're going backward.
Can I deal with the last point first? I don't want to be going backwards, but I want to look forward, okay? Can I clarify the point about the economic situation and the financial situation? I'm primarily referring to the financial situation, but obviously, as an economic situation improves, it does have a contradictory effect to the financial position. Your second point was around, would we consider looking at smaller groups to look at particular issues? I will certainly give that some consideration. And I think your third point is the issue about whether there is a forum amongst national chairs of Audit Committees. Increasingly, there is in the public sector, not just in local authorities. One has to be careful, because these things can become talking shops rather than doing shops. I will certainly look at that and see if there's a mechanism by which collectively the risk factor, which is the real risk that we may not be able to meet statutory obligations, whether that is getting adequate governance at higher levels.
Thank you, Hamish. Does council agree to receive the report?
Agree.
Thank you. I now go to item six, which is Standards Committee Annual Report for 2013-14. I call on Mark Scrimshaw, the Independent Chair, to introduce the report for information and discussion.
Good evening, council. If I may, just like to pick up on a couple of points that were raised about the independent aspect before I launch into this, and the whole value for money fee, because it's something that... Sorry, David, do you want me to... Sorry. Something we are very aware of in the financial constraints. No doubt, some of you will have looked at situations like Rotherham and Doncaster and thought, "How did that happen?". I look at them very closely from a standards point of view, and look at them and think, "Is there any way that could happen in Newcastle?". Not suggesting anything like that is going on. But I know that if there were complaints from anyone about the behaviour of either councillors or officials that were of that, not even that kind of magnitude, any kind of magnitude like that, they would not get past the system that we have in place. And I think the reputational damage avoided alone is worth the money that the council spends on this. Equally, it's not the first line on paragraph 3.1, but it's the second line, George. You don't have a legal requirement for Standards Committee either, but Newcastle has always been very progressive on this. It set up a Standards Committee, it was then a Standards and Audit Committee, a year before there was any legislation passed on this, seeing it coming and wanting to be in the forefront of this. So that was 1999. Good grief, what a long time ago. And I think that that's been seen through, and the decision of the council to want to keep its Standards Committee going in the face of what clearly the conservative element of the government wanted to get rid of it, was very far-sighted as well. I think that is mirrored in the quality, calibre, and the enthusiasm of the members that both parties send to sit on the committee, which has been extraordinarily high right from the start, but also the quality of the independent members, which has now shrunk to two. But we're very fortunate to have, as the independent co-chair, a gentleman called Mick Gary, who is incredibly enthusiastic and committed. And I would also like to, I'm not sure whether he's here tonight, like to thank Dave Hardman, councillor Hardman, who has been a really supportive elected vice-chair. So I think we're very lucky in that. Just moving on through some points I'd like to highlight in the rest of the report. The code of conduct for employees. It's long overdue, this. We know it's long overdue, and it's been, if you look back at our last probably five annual reports, you'll see it's a thing to do in the next year. That's simply because we have been sitting, waiting for government guidance that we've been promised every year on this, and in the end, kind of got fed up and did it ourselves, really. Good consultation on that, again, good feedback, and thanks to Constitutional Committee for approving that. Similarly with dispensations, we haven't had any requests for dispensations at this council yet, but there is a system in place and ready for if and when one should come up, and I think that's really important, that we don't, if something happens, we don't spend months and months trying to set something up, we're there and ready to go. Parish councils, I'd like to say a few things about parish councils. Parish councils in some committees, some authorities, are the absolute bane of standards life. It's widely perceived that one of the reasons that there was so much lobbying by Conservative Shire councils to get rid of Standards Committees was the vast number of complaints coming in about parish councils. You'll see later on the number of complaints, but we've been, again, been very fortunate, and a lot of that work has been down to previous head of Democratic Services, Ian Poll, going to talk to them, and that's been carried on through Linda and the current Democratic Services, of engagement with parish councils. We don't have a lot, but they're very important, and they can lead to, particularly in planning, can lead to a lot of complaints. We've also had terrific participation from the parish council members, and I think that's really important, that they seem that they're part of that. And so we'd also need to maintain the training of parish councils, parishers, parish councils and the councillors, on the importance of standards, on the importance of the code of conduct, what it actually means, because a lot of them don't understand what some of those things about declaration actually mean, and the training in that, the training in the code of conduct is very, very important. On complaints against councillors, you'll see the very small, very small number, thankfully. And before anybody asks me what the achievements of the Standards Committee since 1999 has been, I'd like to think that, not that your behaviour's improved, of course, we told you to improve it, but that the growing importance of standards, of behaviour, of how you talk to each other, how members of public address, has become higher on the list of priorities of what a councillor's job is. And I think that's why we receive so few complaints, we receive a few between yourselves, but so few complaints from the public on how you deal with them. And I think that's a huge credit to you, and a tick in a box for us as well. One of the new parts of the process that was set up in the change of the legislation was the creation of this extraordinary beast worthy of Edward Lear, called the independent person, which is not an independent member. We're different, we're not people, we're members. There are, most councils have one, we have two. We're very fortunate in having Dawn Dunn, who is terrific, and George Clark, who I'm sure many of you remember when he worked here, he's also an independent person for North Tyneside, so keeping very busy. They are now, I think, it took a little while to work out for John, the monitoring officer, how that system of talking to them, involving them in decisions, was going to work, but I think that's now working very well. They're very happy with it, I think John's very happy with it. And that is how complaints are dealt with initially, through cooperation between the monitoring officer and the independent person, they don't come to the Standards Committee anymore. So I'm pleased that that's working, plus we've got two good people there. Onto the perennial procedures for registering gifts and hospitality. All I'm going to say is, it's very good, but it's not perfect. We did have an issue in this last year over a few co-optees onto committees who were appointed those committees by the bodies they worked for, who didn't see why they should have to declare. We had a bit of a ding-dong about this, we were as adamant with them as we have been with councillors in the past. If you are in a position of influence on any council committee, you declare, or we'll be having a problem with you sitting on it. And in the end, I think they've agreed. We've written to them once again, same letter that many, well, a few of you will have had over the past fifteen years. But those few people who refuse to declare bring the average right down. So I'm very pleased with the efforts that you all make in declaring, and I hope now that everybody understands why it's important to put a nil return in. Onto paragraph 15, that you, I think Jeremy asked about the National Committee for Audit Chairman, how long would that take? Six hours? We do have a regional structure for chairs and vice-chairs of Standards Committees. Now, we wondered whether this was going to be as significant under the new regime. Actually, it's been really important, because there's so much scope for doing things differently under the current legislation, and this has seen and ironed out a lot of those. We've all, all the councils involved in that, in this, have changed, as you can see, we've had eight local authorities attending, eight or nine now, and they've all learned things, changed procedures, talked to each other very well. One of the things that irks people a lot is the limited sanctions that are available to Standards Committees on complaints. Actually, it doesn't bother me, because I think that one of the most effective things we can do, the most effective thing we can do, and somebody used to work for the BBC, I can hear somebody saying, "Well, he would say that, wouldn't he?", is actually naming people. It's not whether you send Banham for three months or six months. In a way, that's a party issue, that's something we would send to the party and say, "This person has not done that, deal with it." But in terms of naming somebody to the press, issuing a finding, I think that is the most significant thing we can do. And I don't want this Standards Committee to be punitive, I want it to be cooperative. And I think if we had those kind of punitive punishments, that would weaken the sense of cooperation I get from you guys, which is vital to the continuation of the committee. One other thing, 15.3, a very anodyne little paragraph there, well-written, John. Social media, the discussion about social media is not over by a long way. It's a very complicated issue, we recognise that, it has all kinds of issues tied up in it, but equally, there are some genuine concerns about it. So I'm sure that will be one of our big issues in the years to come on. Should there even be any restrictions on it? If so, what should they be? And I'm talking about the use in council meetings as well. But more to come on that, and obviously, feedback and input will be vital. And I'd just like to end by thanking, the pressure on the staff that deal with our committees is huge. The Legal Department has had major cuts, Democratic Services Department has had major cuts. I can only pay huge tribute to John Softley, to Helen Wilson from Legal, and to Linda Scott from Democratic Services, who have kept up a fantastic quality of service to us, even though it's very, very hard. John's got far more responsibilities now as managing officer, virtually does the whole thing, apart from the independent persons. So without them, it would be extremely difficult to do this job, without their guidance, without their thought, without their input, and without their commitment. So, thank you to your staff, thank you to the council members who sit on audit, and thanks to my independent co-chair.
Thank you, Mark. Very informative, thank you. Councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was waving just to get on the Lord Mayor's register before. I was waving just to get on the Lord Mayor's register before, I wasn't waving at you particularly, but I will do, hello. And I think, if I remember rightly, you hit your own particular long service milestone last year. And I, and I think this might be, if not the first, one of relatively small number of occasions where you presented your two reports at the same council meeting, so a bit of a double act. But it's interesting because it gets us to think about both aspects of it. I just wanted to comment on two things, or to invite you to comment on two things. I took the trouble to look back over the two previous reports. When it comes to complaints about councillors, I was interested to see that three years ago, two years ago, we had three complaints, last year we had eight and this year we got eleven. Now that just kind of troubles me a bit because if you, you well remember, in fact, you alluded to it, that it was to get rid of trivial and vexatious complaints, as it was put at the time, that the statutory bodies were abolished and it was part of the thinking that led us into the kind of route we're in now. So I'd be interested in your comment about, about why you think the numbers are increasing. And you don't have to comment on this, but my own view is that it says rather less about the people who are complained about and rather more about the people who do the complaining. I want to comment on what you said at the very end about naming and shaming. I agree with your general point that I think the Committee on Standards and Public Life over, over, overate this lack of a wide range of sanctions. But actually, the truth of the matter is that before a decision is made, sometimes even by an officer, in the kind of world we live in at the moment, names get out and there is a degree of prejudgment, there is a degree of, I won't say shaming, but to use the phrase that you, you mentioned, I don't think, I don't think that works very well and I think that's highly unfortunate. And my other comment really kind of links to it, but in paragraph eleven point six, I read it carefully three or four times and I don't understand it because what you say in that report is, first of all, you were going to review the regime this year, but you decided not to because various meetings of councillor, of officers from other authorities came together or maybe chairs came together and decided that ours is pretty good anyway, so we didn't need to review it. But then you go on to say, but we did make a few changes and then you go on to say, but we're going to review it next year anyway and the reason is because you're, you want to see the outcome of all the investigations that are currently going on. So that sounds a bit confused to me and I'd really be grateful if you'd guide us through it and tell us what you're really thinking and what, what concerns you and if you have a review, what shape you think it might take. Because much as I admire and thank you for the important role that you and your colleagues and the officers carry out, I do think the whole city council owns its, its regime, its standards regime. So I hope that when you do carry it out, you might give members of the council in their entirety an opportunity to comment and be involved and not just do it as something that standards committee are going to do off their own bat.
Thank you, David. Well, you said you didn't understand it, but you just summed it up perfectly, that's exactly what we did. I'll deal with that point first. Yeah, it was partly because we felt that with the legislation having changed so recently, we needed a little bit more time to look at the implications of what that meant before we carried out a review. A review will be done and I absolutely agree, it should be, it will be open for input to all members of the council, but I'd also like to make it open to the public as well. I'd like to get feedback from everybody who's possibly involved, whether that, that means having an open meeting or, I don't know, but my instinct is to entirely agree with you that if this, if, if standards committee doesn't represent the council, then there's no point having it. It's not a little clique, it's not a cabal of standards freaks, it is a body representing you to do the work you consider important. So absolutely the input of councillors is vital to that, so I'd absolutely agree with that. So I hope that's, complaint, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that three, eight and eleven is a statistically significant number from the number of public meetings that are attended, number of council meetings attended to say that complaints are growing. There've been a couple of cases that have, that have set off a series of complaints, so it's not eleven incidents, it's probably six incidents, something like that. Some, obviously something to keep an eye on. The one thing, one thing that the new regis, the new regime has done is it's enabled the monitoring officer to get rid of trivial complaints at the first hurdle without it ever having to come to, to a committee to be, to be dragged out. So that should speed up the getting rid of trivial complaints, vexatious complaints. And I'd take issue with you, I did not say naming but shaming. I would never say that as a credible journalist. I did say naming. And I, I, I agree with you, it's unfortunate to see leaks about things, wherever they come from, however they're received, it's an, it's an issue about social media that has to be looked at. People mention things on a tweet and somebody picks it up, all newspapers now have people who sit there all day doing nothing but read, reading tweets from councillors and MPs and journalists as far as I know. It is unfortunate, David, yes, it's part of our modern world that is very unfortunate. If there was anything I could do about it, I'd try. None of them have come from us and none of them have come from our officers. And that's really all I can say about that. Thank you for your comments and especially about the review, I think it's important to get that input.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Stockdale?
Thanks very much, Lord Mayor. First of all, thank you very much, Mark, for coming along and presenting the report tonight and thanks so much for your work. I was on the standards committee, believe it or not, for a year and I know how, I know how the work can quite often be difficult and challenging circumstances. Councillor Faulkner sort of touched on the question I want to ask really, but it's specifically around the point that you made in your report earlier about complaints that fly back and forward between elected members. And I just wonder if you think that we've got, if the processes that we've got in place are sufficiently robust to prevent councillors using standards for political posture and point scoring and to grab an occasional headline?
Well, they don't use them because if they make a series of vexatious or trivial complaints, they don't come anywhere near standards. John gets rid of them with the independent persons. I think that's one of the few good things about the new regime. And hopefully people will soon realise that just putting in a complaint no longer means it's going to launch some kind of investigation. It, it won't unless there is meat to it, it won't be investigated and unless there's a lot of meat to it, people won't be found to have contravened the code of conduct. So in terms of the number of, the bald figure of the number of complaints, the number of those that have been weeded out at the very first hurdle is really pretty high, isn't it, John? And that's work for John, but it's not as much, anything like, as much work of him having to come to words with a reporter as asking for an investigation, John sending Helen off to do an investigation, coming back. That was a nightmare. This at least gets rid of those and if he sees a pattern in that, he has entirely liberty to come to us and say, please do something about these councillors who are doing this. It's not got to that point yet, it may, if he, if he comes to us with a request like that, we will deal with it. But I think, you know, we are not a political football because it never gets near us. John might be.
Thank you. Councillor Hardman?
My question's been answered, but I would like to just have the opportunity to thank Mark for the work he does. It is a fantastic committee to work on and it is great to be on a committee that is apolitical. All parties can deserve, congratulations for working very hard on this and all the staff as well and the independent people. Thank you.
I think that deserves a round of applause, yeah. A round of applause, yes. Sorry, David, do you want to speak?
I would too, as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In, on page twenty-nine, thirteen point two, it talked about the change of the wording to, to become bodies with charitable purposes. And this meant that with regard to the members' register, membership of the Masonic Lodge fell into that category. At the moment, some members of the public may feel it an anomaly that the employee's code of conduct does not include that. And I'm just wondering whether that will be part of the review for the coming year, that that may be changed for that, for the employees too?
Yes. Yes.
In a word, yes.
Whether we'll get it on is, of course, it's a battle, but yes, I firmly believe that.
Okay, are we all done? All finished? Does councillor Gruet receive the report?
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Your usual in-depth report. Item seven is questioned by members. We have also received two questions, Mark, for written reply. These, together with the responses, have been circulated and have also been displayed in the foyer. Item eight is appointments. Are the appointments agreed as set out? Was that agreed?
Yes.
Yes. Item nine is notice of motion. I recall on councillor Powers to move the motion seconded by councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I brought this motion to council tonight in order to raise awareness on this important public health issue facing the people of Newcastle and across the country. The worrying issue is the increase in number of people diagnosed and dying from malignant melanoma, a form of skin cancer and it's linked to the rise in sunbed usage. Since two thousand, the number of new cases of malignant melanoma in females nationally has more than doubled. The motion itself is based on a standard one drafted by Liverpool City Council, which has received cross-party support, including the Lib Dems and their own authority, and is being adapted by other councils across England. However, I've made some changes to it in the context of our own city, not least to use this as an opportunity to praise the work of the Northern Institute for Cancer Research based here in Newcastle, a pioneering institute leading the fight against old cancer, which I'm sure we can all agree is a real credit, not just to the people of Newcastle, but to those across the world. I must also, Lord Mayor, commend Liverpool City Council, who have been, who have been shown real national leadership on this issue through their campaign, which has been supported by organisations and councils across England. It's been a pleasure to work with them to support this campaign and bring the issue to the attention of the people of Newcastle and call the government to take action. Lord Mayor, at a time when there's so much pressure placed upon young people to look like they're celebrity role models, we find that the tan looked as far too often sought after. But what is not often clear to those individuals who choose to use sunbed is the harm that you potentially expose yourself to. Lord Mayor, there is irrefutable evidence that shows that the use of sunbeds dramatically increases the chance of developing skin cancer. As noted in the motion, Cancer UK's own research shows the use of a sunbed for the first time for those aged thirty-five or under increased the risk of malignant melanoma by fifty-nine per cent and the use of, at any age, increases the chance of developing this cancer by twenty to twenty-five per cent. However, some may argue this estimate is too conservative. According to the International Agency for Research in Cancer, they argue that the chance of developing skin cancer is increased by seventy-five per cent if you use sunbeds before the age of thirty. Why are sunbeds so dangerous? Well, they emit UV rays to tannish skin, which can damage DNA in your skin cells, which can then lead to going to cause, to be a cause of skin cancer. They can also cause premature skin aging, leading to coarse skin, which is, can be leathery and wrinkled at a younger age. Lord Mayor, I'm sure this isn't a look worth dying for. And while other people, and while people over the age of eighteen have the right to use sunbeds, they also have the right to make an informed choice. Research conducted by Public Health England clearly shows that there are still large numbers of people under the age of eighteen using tanning salons here in England and that people are far too often not given the right advice before sunbeds. All the while, myths on the positive health benefits on using sunbeds are still prevalent, such as they're great for clearing acne or that the sunbed tan will protect you from burn while in holiday. These are simply not true and they are often offered as fat in tan salons. Lord Mayor, I also believe that there's a role that we can play here to signpost young people to less dangerous forms of tanning, such as using fake tan. To be honest, this is something that I know very little about myself and I think I would struggle to really connect with young people to make this suggestion, but I do believe that our local celebrities could play a crucial role here in really pushing the message on to young people of why sunbeds are dangerous and other, and other alternatives. Lord Mayor, here in Newcastle, under the last Labour administration, we took action by removing sunbeds from our leisure centres, but it's time that we went further and did more. It's a realist in mind that I believe by giving local authorities the power to licence and regulate sunbed businesses so that we can enforce basic measures to ensure people are able to make informed choices and apply some minimum safety standards. The Welsh, Scottish and Northern Irish governments have already implemented these messages and measures and more. It is time the government play catch-up to go beyond the simple and poorly enforced by an under-eighteen-year-old and give local authorities the real power to deal with this issue. I also understand, Lord Mayor, that there's a, an amendment to the motion, but I would urge members to support the original motion as it stands, as I think it offers very little additional to the topic that's being debated other than trying to curtail some of the blame from the, the current coalition government for not bringing these measures forward sooner. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to second this motion, it's a really important one and it's much understated as an issue. Lots of people use sunbeds for all sorts of reasons. The key issue is the overexposure, that is the really important point, and there is a sunbed culture among the young. And I just wanted to just add really that the Sunbed Regulation Act two thousand and ten, I think, does go quite a long way in that it makes it an offence for someone operating a sunbed business to permit young people of under eighteen to either use them or use them in all sorts of ways. But it doesn't go far enough and why I want to support the motion and the strength of the motion around the government not doing sufficient is, and interestingly, yet again, it's behind the Scottish Parliament and the Welsh Assembly and the Northern Ireland Assembly, which I think doesn't bode well. But I, I just think that this is a much bigger problem than the Sunbed Regulation Act admits to. And we've got, one of the things in the act is that young people under eighteen, if they're working in a sunbed business, they, they are exempt from the act. And that seems to me utterly dreadful and I think it's something the government should be taking on. But I agree about the informed choices and I do think the government has a really very strong role here in advising and guiding and educating particularly young people, but not just young people. And a lot of the people who use sunbeds, and increasingly it is young men who are using sunbeds, under thirty-five, they actually come from really often poor areas. I don't think George Osborne's family use sunbeds, I really don't think they do, because they go to all sorts of exciting places. And I think we've got to put this within an austerity programme as well. So I do urge and I support that we stress that the government must do more to broaden this regulation act and do more to educate people. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call on councillor Huddard to move an amendment seconded by councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I am pleased to present this amendment on behalf of councillor Wendy Taylor, who, as everybody knows, is herself an oncologist. She is a cancer specialist based at the Freeman and is unfortunately not able to be with us this evening. Councillor Taylor has amended the original motion in a very, very small way, which I hope councillor Powers will accept as a friendly amendment, as it's designed to improve both the grammar and the intent of the motion. The mention of coalition in the original motion adds no value, in fact, it detracts from the seriousness of the issue. The cult of the suntanned appearance, especially in young women, has been a problematic issue for some years. It was a great concern to many of us to hear that Newcastle used to be called Ibiza on Tyne. That was because of the artificial tans and scanty clothing being worn on the streets at night, whatever the weather, and most of us have seen these young women walking about in shorts, even in the snow. It's important to note that the message about the dangers of excessive sun tanning have still not got through to some of the general public, despite the issue being highlighted in popular TV soaps and by celebrities in magazines. And there is an important role for us as a local authority there to be using our communication systems with our partners and, and contacts to, to get the message over. Even worse is the issue of the unstaffed, pay-by-coin, suntanned booths, which can be used time and time again by teenagers with little advice or information being given. It's really quite dreadful and we do want to see these things banned. I also think it's important, Lord Mayor, to highlight the excellent work of the trading standards staff, who on a recent exercise were able to expose many faults in the solar intensity of the tube in lots of these high street establishments. And it should be a worry to all of the users and the owners. Liverpool City Council have made a good start on this, as they did with smoke-free cities, and we are happy to work with other groups and support the initiatives for licensing and regulation. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Kane?
Seconded, deserved right to speak.
Do you have anyone else wishing to speak? Do you have anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't going to speak on this, but I feel I have to, after hearing what councillor Huddart said about the amendment, simply improving the grammar and not, and taking out tinkering with some of the other wording. That wording is important in the original motion. That wording talks about protecting the health, the safety and good practice in these types of salons, which our residents in this city are being subject to, because the coalition government will not, will not bring in the correct level of legislation to ensure that safety is paramount in these, in these establishments. That's why it's important that the original motion with the original wording is carried in this council, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Was anyone else? councillor Kane, back to you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm a bit of a substitute, given the reshuffling with councillor Taylor's unfortunate absence tonight, and she would have spoken at great length, this, being an expert in the topic. I think this is a very important topic that councillor Powers has brought to us. It's obviously, the regulations brought in in two thousand and ten aren't up to what he feels are necessary, but I do think the council is at its strongest on these issues when it speaks with one voice, and time and time again, we get motions presented to us which everybody could support, apart from one little niggling statement, and it really undermines the gravity of the issue to turn it into a party political issue when it just doesn't need to be. And on the grammar, I am, I am unashamedly pedantic about these things. The, the sentence doesn't actually make sense grammatically, and could be interpreted as the opposite of what councillor Powers, I think, intends it to mean. It sounds as if the, the government is keen on red tape, rather than, I suspect he was trying to say, the government is not keen on red tape. So really, just to sum up, if we accept the amendment, then the council manages to speak with one voice, despite what councillor Dunn said, it does not dilute the original one iota, it strengthens it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. councillor Powers, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I have to say that I'm a little bit surprised that colleagues across the chamber, that they think it's, this, this motion could be undermined, and they feel they couldn't support it just because of a simple criticism to their own coalition partners. I think down in Liverpool, you know, Lib Dems down there voted with the motion, and it was the same criticism line around the lack of action from their coalition government, and they felt able to call their own party to recount on this, and I think it would be really disappointing if, if the Liberal Democrats across the chamber couldn't support this important public issue just because of the sake of a, a tiny amendment that they want to see being put in. I'd, I'd like to thank colleagues for a short, enlightening debate, and I thought it might be just worth adding a couple of little points in, just to address some of the, the comments that were made around what we'd like to see come out of the legislation. Liverpool's ten-point plan to deal with this, some of the things that has picked up on that, which has came out a little bit here, I was quite keen to support, is the idea of banning coin-operated tanning salons, banning the unsupervision of tanning salons. I think it's absolutely imperative that all tanning salons should be staffed by a competent member of staff, who are able to advise at all times individuals of the risks that they are taking by using tanning salons. And also, of course, the unmanned stations, there is no then way to ensure that there's any challenge to the age of people that are using these places as well. The, the other ones, I think, is probably worth mentioning as well, that we'd like to see being introduced, is the requirement for adequate display of health information, correct health information in, in tanning salons, and that there should be a provision for safe and appropriate protective eyewear. I think it's probably my three key asks to really come out of that. See, the, the government legislation that was introduced in two thousand and ten around the sunbed regulation does give scope for these, these demands to be met, but the UK government has only introduced the, the ban, while devolved governments have introduced the fuller extent of the legislation to be able to give local authorities these exact powers. So I think it is, the provision's already there within the current act, and I think it would be beneficial if the government would allow local authorities to act upon that and introduce legislation now on authorities, eh, licence now on authorities, sorry. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're voting on the amendment. Forty-three to twenty, so the amendment falls. We now vote on a substantive motion. Does somebody say agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed? Well, that concludes tonight's business. Thank you all very much.